...15 meeting of this Fredericksburg City Planning Commission to Order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and thank you for being with us. I'd like to remind those present that item number three, the public hearing for the comprehensive plan, is a public hearing. If you'd like to speak to that item, you can come to the podium when called and you'd have five minutes. Please state your full name and address, including zip code, clearly for the record. We also have a general public comment period, item four. That's a period which is provided at each regular meeting for comments by citizens regarding any matter related to the commission business, matter that is not related to commission business and on the agenda for a public hearing tonight. I will request that speakers observe a three-minute time limit during that period and yield the floor when the light up on the table there indicates that you should do so. And there should be no dialogue between the speaker and the commission. We have no minutes at this hearing to approve or approve those at our next meeting, so let's move into the comprehensive plan.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. McAfee.
Before we begin, is there any desire to suspend the rules to switch the agenda items around in case somebody doesn't want to sit through all that?
I mean, we can do that. Would you like to suspend the rules?
I just wonder if there's anybody else that feels like that might help or... No? Okay. I'll withdraw that idea.
Okay. Thank you for that. So, moving into item three, which is the comprehensive plan, does staff want to give us a short update of anything?
The plan has been developed over several months. It's been provided to you now. I know there's been some discussion about goals and policies, and we can talk about that later if you like, but the document has undergone a fair amount of work. There's a certain amount of public comment involved in that. We've met with groups. We've had people call us. We've had individuals, organized groups, agencies and such, so it reflects a fair amount of input from the community. And it's, at this point, in final form for action by the commission if it desires, but certainly there will continue to be work done on it to add to the appendices, add photographs, et cetera.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to speak to this item, please do come to the podium. You have five minutes. State your full name and address, including zip code, for the record, please.
My name is Molly K. Flurry. I reside at 805 Wheaton Street here in Fredericksburg, Virginia, 22401. I'm an attorney with Herschler Fletcher, and I'm here this evening to read a letter on behalf of my colleague, Charles W. Payne, Jr. The letter reads as follows: The purpose of this letter is to comment on the city of Fredericksburg's most recent comprehensive plan draft. Please be advised that this firm and the undersigned represent S.L. Nesbom Realty Company and its affiliated companies with two specific rezoning requests pending before the city, specifically the rezoning of a portion of GPIN number 7769-87-3295 and GPIN number 7769-78-8378, which includes approximately 21.5 acres owned by the Coleman and Briscoe families designated in the city's draft comprehensive plan as Subplanning Area 1E, located within Planning Area 1, Celebrate Virginia/Central Park. The second companion zoning matter is a proffer amendment application for GPIN number 7769-87-5772 designated in the city's draft comprehensive plan as Subplanning Area 1F. For the purposes of Subplanning Area 1E parcel, we are proposing a mixed-use development of 256 multifamily units, which include 175 family units and 80 age-restricted units. In addition, there is a significant commercial component for this project that includes approximately 28,000 square feet of professional office space and a 100-room hotel. Pursuant to our fiscal impact analysis produced by Dr. Stephen Fuller of George Mason University, the project will generate on an annual basis a net fiscal tax benefit to the city of approximately $127,000. In addition, the project proposes approximately $580,000 in cash proffers to offset any capital impacts for schools and fire and rescue. The companion proffer amendment application for the Subplanning Area 1F parcel requests a proffer amendment to the rezoning approval 04-10 to allow the development of 32 multifamily units along with 96 by right units. This project also includes $586,688 in cash proffers for any capital impacts to schools, fires, and rescues and roads, including cash proffers to complete the light at the intersection of Fall Hill Avenue and Noble Way. Thus, between the two projects, the applicant is proposing, in addition to the necessary ride-of-way dedications and amenities, $1,166,688 in total cash proffers. We believe both the applications are consistent with the city's current comprehensive plan as combined. We also believe your work with the current draft comprehensive plan should include greater clarity as to the highest and best use for Subplanning Area 1E parcel, including a mix of residential and commercial uses. In this regard, we respectfully request that chapters 10 and 11 of the draft plan designate Subplanning Area 1E parcel as a potential planned development mixed-use or planned development commercial residential use that encourages residential uses on this site. Our rationale is as follows: Plan development commercial, strictly commercial only, for this site is not the highest and best use of the property, as the current PDC district includes an extensive footprint of mostly big-box commercial uses. I believe it is fair to state that there is more than adequate commercial space in the city's PDC area, and given the relatively small size of this parcel, it makes little sense to include it within the PDC district, which encourages properties of at least 150 acres. The current PDC district includes a variety of commercial and retail uses, including office, retail pharmacy, hotels, entertainment and services, but very little residential density. As such, these large shopping and commercial centers lack the necessary rooftops to ensure their viability. This is clearly evident in the challenges at Celebrate Virginia to expand the commercial footprint even given the anchor of Wegmans. The city is attempting to attract a large entertainment user to Celebrate Virginia. Thus, having a residential development within walking distance of this area could assist the city in attracting a user. We understand the city's concerns regarding cost impacts due to new growth. However, we see the city as the center of the region and with a limited population of roughly 25,000 persons, the city does not have enough capacity to sustain the businesses within it. Residential uses, if properly targeted, can be a positive economic generator. In closing, we appreciate your service to the city and time and efforts during this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flurry. Are there any other speakers tonight?
Thank you, Chairman Friesner. I'm Clyde Matthews. I reside at 1111 Colony Road in Fredericksburg, Virginia, 22401. And Colony Road is located in College Heights. I understand that the rental inspection program had been included in the comprehensive plan. This existed, this program was in existence a number of years ago, and I just wanted to say a few words in favor of it. College Heights was heavily involved in the original rental inspection program when it began back in 2007. And I'd like to read from the minutes of the College Heights Civic Association Annual Meeting, which was held in May the 16th, 2006, at Christ Lutheran Church. John Walt, City Code Compliance Officer, presented the rental inspection program. This program is new to Fredericksburg. A program will start in August, September, 2007. College Heights will be the first neighborhood to be subject to these inspections. The goal of the inspection program is to ensure compliance to building codes and the life, health, and safety of those living in rental property. There will be a two-year inspection cycle, but if property passes the initial inspection, the property will be exempt from inspection for four years. Inspection of property will look primarily at building code compliance, but inspections may also notify zoning office if they perceive that more than three unrelated people are living in the dwelling or too many people living in the dwelling to support it. Also, Williamsburg had instituted this program, of course, that's where William &amp; Mary's located, and they found initially that only 51 percent of the rental properties passed. And after two inspection cycles, 97 percent of the properties passed. Also, I understand, if I remember correctly, I'm going back eight or 10 years ago, that the University of Virginia was having similar problems with rental housing around the grounds. I'm going to be correct there, it's the grounds, not the campus. So, they met with the success of that program, too. And, of course, one of the things that happened, of course, was the Great Recession came along in 2008, 2009, so the city had to pull in on its spending. And unfortunately, the property rental program had only been in existence for a year, certainly not more than two years, and that program was part of the budget cuts. So, I'm very glad to see that this plan is being re-instituted, hopefully it'll be passed not only by the planning commission, but also by city council. Also, at our next board meeting, I can't really say that I speak for the board tonight because it has not come up to our present board, but I can say that the Board of Directors back in 2006, 2007, when I was president, and we had many things going on there in College Heights, in fact, I remember even Eric Nelson came and helped us set up a workshop to deal with a number of problems in College Heights at that time, and that's when we learned about this rental inspection program. So, I will say the board is on record from 2000, around 2006 or so. But our next board meeting for the College Heights Civic Association will be next Wednesday on April the 1st. I certainly plan to recommend to the board at that time that we officially again endorse and fully support the re-establishment of the rental inspection program.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Are there any other speakers?
Good evening, Commissioners and Commissioners. Thank you for letting us speak. My name is Kathleen Harrigan. I am the Executive Director of Friends of the Rappahannock, 3219 Fall Hill Avenue, Fredericksburg, 22401. I'm also a resident of the city at 1309 Payne Street, College Heights, Fredericksburg, 22401. So, I'm just here to thank you for doing some things, ask you to think about a few more things that we talked about the last time I was here. Specifically, I really still applaud the livable community concept, and I do really appreciate your efforts to guard the river. And I use the word "guard" instead of "protect" just really because I don't mean it as anything of a passive effort. It really is guarding the river, and it kind of takes us to think about it all the time, it being such a distinguishing characteristic of the city. I just think it needs to be on everybody's mind when we're making decisions about the river and what we're doing here. So, to that end, for the transportation section, I urged you to really support public transportation. There is certainly emphasis in here, but with the population growth we have planned, I really think that we need to push harder on public transportation. I think that goes along with your initiatives, both for the environmental policies and wherever you've mentioned clear in the document. Again, just to have public transportation. I also urged you to think outside of the boundaries when protecting the river, where you have lands that are adjacent to the river or where efforts in transportation might damage the lands you have that are protecting the river. I think a perfect example of that is the Rappahannock Parkway Project, which, you know, starts within city boundaries, but then obviously heads out to Spotsylvania County. And I think that your efforts need to consider beyond the city boundaries and consider the entirety of that because it affects the river and land you own all along the river. In Chapter Four, Public Services, there was intention to put a wastewater treatment table for current and planned capacities. I don't see that in the current document. I might have missed it somewhere in the 100-plus pages, but I really urge that that table would be a useful clarifying tool to kind of set the stage for what the current loads, because I would add load, I would add nitrogen and phosphorus loads in that table for current and planned capacity at the plant. And then finally, in Section 12, where we start talking about specific planning areas, thank you so much for adding the language regarding Section Parcel 1A regarding the steep slopes and protecting the steep slopes. I still urge you to take the same consideration with Parcel 2B because, again, you're saying that you want to maintain urban wooded canopy. This is an entirely wooded track, and we're talking about the lowland area being protected and the upland area in the current text being possibly developed as medium-density use. And yet, it's alongside your river, it's near your park, it's alongside the conservation FOR holds, and so it's one of those areas, I think, really should be singled out for protection rather than more intense development. Thank you for letting me make my comments tonight, and thank you for the work you've done.
Thank you, Ms. Harrigan. Are there any other speakers? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. What is the will of the commission? Or is there further discussion?
Well, I guess I'll make a motion, and then we can have a discussion.
Sure.
I move that we allow the final draft to be completed, and we take up a vote in two weeks at our next regular meeting. That's the motion. The discussion is that...
Is there a second for the motion?
I'll second that.
Mr. Page is seconding the motion. Okay, continue, please, Mr. Dines.
The...I've become aware that portions of, or some of the edits and some of the changes that this committee, this commission agreed to, you know, in our working sessions, have not been found in the draft that is before us right now. I think it's important for integrity of the process that when we meet and we have work meetings and we invest in making these modifications, that they actually appear in the draft that we would consider for a vote. And I think the public has the right to see the document in its entirety before we actually vote on it.
Mr. McAfee.
I have a question. I have a question for staff, then. As far as the document in the entirety, we all know that this will continue to undergo changes even when city council gets it. I guess my question is going to center on things like tables and pictures that have yet to be added. You know, a picture can change the meaning of things sometimes, and so I would like the ability to look at those. Is that something that's going to be available to us within two weeks, or is that going to take longer?
That'll take considerably longer, but I can certainly understand your desire to do that, and I have no issue with, you know, bringing all of that stuff to the commission.
So, finishing, I guess then my question goes to clarity of finishing the draft would be incorporating the original language that was agreed to at the meetings, the work sessions? Is that what you're referring to, is finishing the draft?
Yes, that is what I was referring to. In our work sessions, we agreed to a series of edits and modifications to the document, particularly in the Goals, Initiatives, and Policies sections. And I think it's very important that those be reflected in the draft that we vote on. And I think it's very important that the public have the opportunity to see those before we actually take our vote. Right now, neither of those conditions has been met, so I'm not comfortable on voting to approve the draft as it is before us today.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Page.
I agree with that. I started the last week or so to go back and try to look at the draft that we have before us, which is the one that's dated. Well, that's the wrong one. It was March...
12.
March 12. And to go back and check that against the minutes from our work sessions on the things that we had discussed and decided upon, and I saw that there were some differences. I must admit, though, that sometimes when you go back and look at those minutes, it's sometimes kind of hard to figure out what exactly, you know, was agreed to, and I think that makes it all the more important that we have a final version to look at. But I had two questions. One is that at our last meeting, our work session, we talked about this implementation plan, and I wasn't sure what was actually decided at that meeting. I was hoping that we would have some kind of implementation plan similar to what was in the 2007 plan. As you recall, that's not a schedule. What it is, it was essentially a prioritization, I think, into three different categories, top priority, something or other, and then needs attention. And I think that even though that's not, you know, binding and very specific, I think what it does is it gives us, the council and the public, an idea of what do we see as some sort of prioritization of the many initiatives that are in the plan. I don't know how many, if you count them all up, it's probably at least 50 there, and obviously you can't do 50 things at the same time, but it would, I think, help guide us and everybody to, as we refer back to this document, to have something in mind. I know that Mr. Johnson had said that as we talk about the area plans, that we'll get a lot more specific and have a better idea how to develop that, but I think that there's a lot here that can be categorized to some degree, and so I'm hopeful that we could have that. I don't think it would probably be that difficult if we looked at those and divided them up. That's my first question. The second one is, what Roy was saying about the pictures and charts, I think that's good to have all that. It'd be nice to have all that now, but if that looks like that's going to delay the whole thing for a couple of months, I'd kind of hate to see that. I hear what you're saying, a picture can speak a thousand words, and a chart can be I would just hope we could do it, you know, quicker than that.
My intention was not to find something to further delay this, believe me. My intention was to clarify exactly what we were looking for as a finished product because the motion, you know, I thought that needed some clarification.
So, your idea is that if we were to vote in two weeks, that we would not be having the photographs and charts?
Well, we're as free as anybody else to make comments on the photographs as they go forward through the process as anybody else is.
I think that's fine. It'd be nice to have them, but...
Mr. Johnson.
At the last meeting, we had asked commission members to identify...
Ooh, was that what you did?
If there were particular issues or topics that you thought an illustration or a drawing would be helpful...
Yes, you did.
And if you do put your vote off, if that could be something that you do look at or think about as we go through, we can...as Mr. Page pointed out, there were several pictures in the last version of the comprehensive plan that were colorful but not necessarily helpful, and I don't think we need superfluous drawings, but there are, obviously, there are some comments that would benefit from illustration. So, we would appreciate, in a way, sort of staff is almost a little too close to it to really kind of know, well, what is the concept here that needs to be illustrated? What are the concepts that would benefit from illustration? So, I would ask that you do that. And going back to Mr. Page's other comment about the implementation plan, I respect what he says, and I just have to sort of, as I said before, slightly disagree. From a timing standpoint, I think this ought to go forward to the city council, and council ought to make their final decisions, and then I think it's appropriate for staff at that point in time to come back with an implementation plan that would address the area planning activities and the other elements. If you wish to make that some sort of time deadline, you know, we expect to see that within whatever, some reasonable period of time after council acts, I'm certain we can work through that. I don't mind you setting a deadline for us, but I'm just hesitant. I would prefer to have council have a final document figured out before we then turn around and prioritize. And then, not only would we be taking it to you all, we would take that back to council as well and get council's commitment to it. We're anxious to get council's commitment to move forward on many of these items, including the area plans. And that would be the point at which we would probably try to confirm the order of area plans, at least initially. I don't know if we have to order all 10 of them, but at least to confirm the first three or four.
Mr. McAfee.
I would agree with a great deal of that logic. I would observe that in the past, we set those initiatives or those things to act upon, and, you know, it gets, it really falls down to where the money is and what's happening next and where the advantages to act are. But I do agree that it's a valuable tool and a guideline, and at least you can look at it and go, oh, you know what, we need to go back and pick this up. We've left this to the side. And so I would like to see it done. It does make some sense to me to do it after we figure out what the whole thing looks like, when city council is through with it. I would suggest going another step forward because the whole thing, the rubber hits the road when you apply the CIP to it. And so if we could sit in a joint work session with city council and Mark Whitley and anyone else that we think is advantageous, we could hammer out some prioritizations that are likely to get funded, and wouldn't that be grand?
Good point. Are there other comments? Mr. Dines?
I may, to clarify the intent of the motion, I may actually offer a substitute motion to my own motion.
Can I get some help? Can you... You had an amendment. Thank you. I thought that was...
All right. So, I'm going to amend it, and I'll read it, and I have it in text. I can email it later. I move that we freeze the textual content of the comprehensive plan to allow completion of formatting, insertion of figures, pictures, and charts with the following exception: The commission has agreed to a set of changes to the goals, policies, and initiatives, and also capacity plans that have not yet been inserted and are to be inserted.
And is that okay with the secondor of the amendment?
I'm not sure. Sure what that is.
Yeah, so can I ask for clarification?
Sure.
You'd like to see a document that is, the text is frozen...
Right.
You'd like to see the formatting occur for the document and then review it at that time?
Yes. The formatting doesn't have to be complete, but I certainly wouldn't want to prevent it in the intervening two weeks. What I would like to do is, there are a set of changes that we've discussed in the commission. I would like to see them come in to the document. All right. I would like to not have other portions of the document changed that involve text. Okay? Because one of the things that makes this process so onerous is it's a large document, and reviewing a document for changes, you know, after the fact many times consumes a lot of time, and we're voting on this document. So, I would like to have a document that is frozen so that we may actually review it, so the public may actually review it before we actually vote on it. I understand that there are pictures and figures and other things that will be brought in. All right? We've been told of that ahead of time, so that's not news to us, and that's, you know, that's the process we agreed to previously, and so I'm not attempting to change that answer.
Mr. McAfee.
Your motion said pictures and tables.
Okay, I'll read it again because it's long. I move that we freeze the textual content of the comprehensive plan to allow completion of the formatting and insertion of figures, pictures, and charts with the following exception: The commission has agreed to a set of changes to the goals, policies, and initiatives, and to the insertion of resource utilization that have not yet been inserted and are to be inserted.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Page.
Question there because when you say "frozen," what I'm trying to do right now is to go back and make sure that the language and the ideas that we have agreed to in work sessions... sessions.
Yes.
Are included. When you say frozen.
I say frozen except, and then the except.
Except for, except for these.
Except for, the commission has agreed to a set of changes to the goals, policies, and initiatives, and also to resource utilization. Right? So that's the sewer capacity, water capacity conversation that we had, that have not yet been inserted and are to be inserted.
And what about the, our new preface or introduction?
Okay. I mean, if we agree, we modify the motion, but that's the way I want to go. It's the other 100 pages of the document that I would like to have frozen. I mean, we've, the things we've discussed and agreed to, I would like to see in the document. The things we have not discussed and not agreed to, I would like to see stopped changing.
Mr. Nelson.
I'd like to respond to some of the questions that have been raised. And also, I think, as the one person who is writing this plan, I take exception to the suggestion that I'm not paying attention to what the planning commission has asked to be in here, because I believe I have. The action plan, I think, is, as Chuck stated, the group did agree, I thought, maybe a meeting you weren't here, Jim, that that would wait until after adoption and until it was a little bit further along. So I, my understanding is that the commission agreed to do that. Pictures are yet to come. There are no more charts to insert here. We discussed the capacity issues at the last meeting. The charts that we have developed are incorporated, and you've seen those. We were not planning to do a chart for the sewer capacity nor for the water capacity. There's several paragraphs in there that makes clear that we're not really dealing with capacity issues, and we were going to leave it at that. And my understanding, again, was that the planning commission was okay with that. What I have done as far as the goals, policies, and initiatives, I have prepared, or am prepared, if you want to get into it this evening, to go through those one by one and show you exactly what we've done. What I had was some notes from Chuck, which he put in track change form, but I also had information from other commissioners and other entities, and those I have incorporated as well. And so I think it would be worthwhile to go over those either tonight or some other night. But we've been incorporating your comments, and we'll continue to do that.
Are there any other commissioners who want to go over this red line strikeout, multiple colored document that we got on our desk this evening, or is that to be reacted to later on?
Well, I think, so, I think I'd like to start and say thank you to the residents of the city that have taken time to engage us in the comprehensive plan update that we've been working at for over 15 months now. I'd like to thank the many community organizations that have met with us and provided us with input on this document. Thank you to the other boards and commission members for meeting with us and providing their input and feedback in the plan as we've developed it. And thank you to the city staff in particular for your arduous work to incorporate the many viewpoints of this commission and the greater community. Finally, thank you to the other members of the commission. The pay here is not great. We're all volunteers, but your interest and dedication to this community and to this plan, this planning process, has been inspiring, and it's been a pleasure to work with you on the plan. I believe the plan before us is not perfect. It is a consensus document, however, and it's not meant to be perfect. I do believe this plan sets a strong path forward for the city, and Fredericksburg has weathered one of the most challenging economic storms of my lifetime, and that's not a long lifetime, but it's still all I've got. And the city is poised to prosper and actively engage in attracting and supporting new businesses and new and existing businesses, and that will support a highly skilled local workforce that we have. The city has been one of, if not the fastest growing cities in the Commonwealth, and that growth has been welcomed in Fredericksburg. But it's also been a great challenge for this commission and for our staff as we discuss future land uses. But our growing population has spurred additional economic, cultural, social, and social growth, excuse me, that have continued to make the city a great place to start a business, raise a family, or retire. As we prepare to vote on the plan and send a recommendation to city council, I hope that the greater Fredericksburg community will take note that the plan was not developed in a vacuum, and it took the incorporation of many people's input. The goal of the plan is to guide and implement the harmonious development of the city in a manner that best promotes public health and safety, convenience, and prosperity for all of its inhabitants. I would hope that we could vote on the plan this evening, knowing that we are making a recommendation to the city council, and by doing so, incorporate verbatim the text changes to the goals, policies, and initiatives that we have on our desk, and the preface letter that the mayor has agreed to sign as part of the plan. But I can't make a motion.
Well, I can. First of all, I won't be here April 8th. I will be in California. Second of all, I would vote for this plan tonight. I would vote for this plan April 8th. It is not perfect. It's not the Constitution. It's not the New Testament. I think we've got enough here that we can go forward with it. I will have an alternative motion that we do approve the plan tonight. And if we don't, we don't. But I am making that motion. I don't know if I have to wait for another, for a vote or whatever, but I will move that we approve the plan this evening.
Yeah, that'd be a substitute motion. Is there a second for the substitute motion?
The plan as it stands here, without the letter from the mayor, or with the letter from the mayor?
I would think with the letter from the mayor. That's fine with me. Sure, the letter, with the letter from the mayor.
All right, I'll second that.
So the motion has been made and seconded. It's a substitute motion. And let me make sure I get this straight.
You vote the substitute first.
We have, yeah, we'll vote the substitute first, but it's to take the current plan with the letter from Mayor Greenlaw, but not the text changes?
Correct.
Is that correct?
That's what you said.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Okay. Is there any discussion on, is that clear?
I'm a little unclear. What about these, the goals that were passed out tonight, goals and so forth?
My understanding is they would be incorporated.
They would be incorporated.
Okay, so then, let me make sure this is clear. So then, the motion is to approve the comprehensive plan that we have by incorporating, now everybody can see this, incorporating verbatim the policies, goals, and initiatives that we had previously agreed to and are not verbatim in the plan currently, but would be, and the letter from the mayor.
Is this correct, Jim?
Yes.
My second stands on that.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the motion? The substitute motion. Mr. Page.
I would hate to see us approve the substitute motion, because I think we're close to finalizing this. I think we owe it to the public to have a single document that is available to them on the internet that they can see and comment on before a vote. That has not been available to them, and I don't think that's the way to do public business.
Mr. Dines.
I agree with those comments. The public and the city really are due a clean document that isn't a, you know, an after the fact assembly. I mean, we can put together the document that we're talking about, and we can hold this vote in two weeks, and then we can move on. The idea that we're going to approve a sequence of steps required to assemble the document, to me, just seems like a broken process. Nothing bad is going to happen if we actually wait for a completed document.
And I hear what you're saying, Mr. Dines. My concern in your original motion was to freeze the text. And one thing that this substitute motion certainly does is it does freeze the text and moves it forward to the city council for their review, comment, and manipulation of the plan for approval. I am concerned that by waiting even two weeks, that that could turn into a longer amount of time where we would make additional changes. And I think the process at 15 months has gone on quite long enough, and I think it's time that the city council is due the chance to review this document.
Call the question then.
Yeah, let's call, so the substitute motion then is to approve the draft plan with the text changes to the policies, goals, and initiatives as outlined, incorporated verbatim, along with the letter from the mayor, which she has reviewed. Please cast your votes.
Is it working, completely working?
The motion passes 5-2. Okay. Thank you. The next item on the public, on the agenda, is the general public comment period. If you'd like to speak on this, in this section, please come to the podium, state your full name and address, including zip code for the record, and you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Ann Black, 121 Poplar in the city, 22401. I am not anti-development nor anti-townhouse. I'm a businessperson who supports well-planned, sustainable growth. Townhouses are often to first-time or second-time buyers because prices are cheaper than detached homes. Move up or step up homeowners sell as soon as they outgrow them or they can afford bigger. Townhouses often have more problems with noise from adjoining neighbors, more noise from vehicles, busier streets, and pride of ownership often is lacking because it's not seen as long-term residence. I did a quick search on the internet, plus obtained information from the planning staff. City townhouses, condos, multifamily units are exploding like wildfire. The city has, in some phase, about 240 townhouses approved, plus 871 attached units in some stage of preapproval, for a total of 1,111 units. This excludes any single-family detached units. The city's 10 square miles. Spotsylvania is 412 square miles, or 40 times bigger. Stafford is about 280 square miles, or three times bigger. Let them have the growth. They have the space, we don't. City parking is already a problem, and with this huge increase of townhouses, parking will be even a bigger problem. How's the infrastructure going to support it? How many more policemen, firemen, city staff are we going to need? What about the already overcrowded schools, which recently requested an additional 1.6 million? Where is the money to support this growth? I provided you with a report, a statistics report for 2014, provided by RBI, which gives data to realtors. There were just 40 townhouses plus 11 condos reported sold in the city in the entire year of 2014. So at that rate, how many years will it take to get all those townhouses, all those dwellings sold? About 22 years. The city has no requirement for shrink swell testing, although there are at least nine areas where it's been identified. Construction on untested soil could prove to be a nightmare for future homeowners and the city. Let's have manageable, smart growth, not housing units crammed into every nook and cranny that developers can find. Now's the time to protect our historic identity for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Black. Are there, are there any other speakers to the general comment period? Seeing none, we'll close the period. Planning commissioner comments?
I'd like to.
Mr. McAfee.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the staff and everybody that's been part of creating this draft and in this process. It's been long, it's been arduous. It's always interesting, but it is, in the end, a job. And I think the amount of public comment that has gone into this is amazing in that this reflects planning documents that I've been part of since 1994, and has a great deal of that public consensus and comment brought forward. And I'm fairly proud of what's here. As has been said, it's not perfect. But as you know, sustainability is a big part of why I'm here. I see Fredericksburg as a traditional urban environment, and I see it that way in the future. I see what we did to our city with block zoning as negative, and I see opportunities to fix some of that now. A lot of that is here in the document. And the previous one in 2005, I believe it was, a couple of us were instrumental in seeing that there was a chapter on sustainability. It served as basically a place marker. But interestingly enough, now, sustainability is part two of three parts of the document. It is seven of 11 chapters, and if you include the appendix, which is mainly ecological issues or environmental issues, it's virtually half of the text of the thing is now wrapped up in our concept of municipal sustainability. And I consider that quite an advancement.
Here, here. Planning director comments?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Just a couple of comments about what Ms. Black said, just a couple, just clarifications. She had mentioned the shrink swell soils policy. That was adopted by city council on March 11th, so all development effective April 1 will have to demonstrate to the building official it's, their status in terms of shrink swell soils. So that is in effect, effective April 1. On the handout that she provided, there's a couple of just little corrections or amplifications under item 11, under Telegraph Hill. Not only is that 350 apartment, that's also, are also 79 single-family lots for that project, just to clarify. And then on item 8, the Hampton's project, the second line, the assisted living facility for 120 clients, they have now dropped that as a component of what they were intending to propose, which leads me to the discussion that occurred last night at city council, just to bring you all up to speed with that. This project does, is tied into a rezoning. They initially had requested planned development commercial zoning. It is in the area that the future land use plan calls for planned development commercial zoning. There was an interpretation made that they could not, they could only use 10% of their property for residential. They're actually proposing to use 70% of their property for residential, and it had to do with how the PDC zoning text is phrased, and I can go into more detail at some other point in time. But nevertheless, that interpretation was made that they could not use PDC zoning for the development as they were designing it. Mr. Payne, their attorney, contacted staff and says, well, what are my options? And, well, we said, well, we could either modify an existing zone like R16 or use some other existing zone, or you could create a zone very similar to PDC that would allow you to do what you want to do. And so what was before council last night was an initiation of a text amendment process that would have created a PDC/R zoning district that would have the same uses in PDC. The density actually was lowered on a periodic basis for residential, lower floor aeroacial for commercial, slightly, slightly lower in height. But there would be no limit as to whether 100% of the site could be residential or 100% could be commercial. There was no parameter established. The discussion last night evolved into more of a specific discussion of the rezoning application itself. application itself, which was not technically what was before them, but that is why the text amendment was there. And, and on a 5-2 vote, they determined to not initiate the text amendment. That may have something to do why you have this letter today and I'm not certain how else the applicant may resolve this, or they may just decide not to pursue the matter altogether. So I just wanted to, and I'll, I'll stop there if you have any questions about that. I had one more thing I wanted to bring up, but I'll stop there.
Mr. McAfee then, Mr. Bates.
I do have a question. The first one, I got to strike the 120, but what was the first one you brought up?
Number 11, Telegraph Hill.
Okay.
It says 350 apartments.
Yeah.
In addition to that are 79 single-family homes too.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bates?
I was.
As well as commercial too, but that's not, that wasn't Ms. Black's point, she was just going through the residential, but anyway, sorry.
I was just curious that the speaker, the attorney, Ms. Flory, talked about us making changes in the, in the subarea that was where, where this property would be located. I don't know which subarea number it is.
Subarea 1.
I don't know whether she was aware that, that we weren't making any changes, any substantive changes in any of the projected land uses for any of the subareas.
And, and I, I had that conversation with Mr. Payne today.
So they decided to go ahead anyway, I guess.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah, this came in this afternoon, a little before 3 o'clock and.
I have another question. I was wondering if Mr. Johnson could fill us in a little bit on the assignment that we're getting from the council on the social services. All I know is what I've read in the newspaper.
Yeah.
Which isn't much.
There is, there will be a text amendment advertised for your April 8th meeting to, they did initiate this text amendment that would make a provision in our zoning regulations for what's called a social service use. That is an activity where services are provided in the form of food service, counseling service, personal cleanliness services, taking, maybe take showers, for folks in the community that have that need. Right now our zoning regulations allow offices and it allows shelters for obviously overnight accommodations and, and there is a, it's sense that what we should, we should have a use that's sort of in, in the middle between those two, something that does not include residential overnight accommodations, but is, provides more services than just at, quote, an office. So that is, that text has been formatted or developed. The city attorney has elected to bring in a specialist, a legal specialist on those issues and so the text you will be getting is going to be modified and actually slimmed down from what was presented to council. There is a real concern that we not define this use based on the users, but just the use, the activity itself. So we're trying to get that correct. And that will be a public hearing on April 8th. I believe the city attorney in fact will be present on April 8th to, to walk you all through that process.
Any other comments?
Well, I, I didn't really understand this because it, it seemed to me that our, under the UDO, we were not having whole lists of permitted uses and uses only by a special permit. I thought we were getting away from that and this seems a throwback to when everything either had to be listed as a permitted use or you couldn't do it.
That is my understanding how the regulations does work, do work, and if it is not listed as a permitted or special use, you can't do it.
We don't have the whole long list that we used to.
Well, it's a pretty long list. It's, it's pretty comprehensive.
Mm-hmm, I love the chart.
It's a pretty big table.
Okay, I'll need to look at it.
Okay. The only other thing I wanted to remind everyone of, the work session between City Council and the school board on Monday, we're pretty certain it's at 5:30. I know it's right here, here in the horseshoe and I'm 90% certain it's at 5:30. Many of you expressed interest in that. So just wanted to remind everyone of that.
If there are no other comments.
And I will also add, I am working with Mark Whitley to get him scheduled to come to one of your all's meetings to talk about the CIP.
But that won't be the 8th, correct?
We, we can do it. I wasn't sure whether you were going to have other things on the 8th or not.
But it's, well, the text amendment is not moving forward.
You're not, then, then.
The 8th might be fine.
The problem with Mark is there's somewhat of a personal conflict because that's, that's spring break.
He's on vacation.
For his kids and so we either do it then or.
The 25th.
Or the 25th.
Okay.
If you all don't mind putting it off the 25th.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
When is, when is council supposed to take action on the CIP?
Good question.
Okay.
Roughly probably towards the end of April, beginning of May.
Okay.
Is it before they approve the budget? It would be part of the budget.
Part of the budget.
Part of it.
If there's nothing else, we are adjourned.